All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the May 4, 2022 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting to order. Just for the public, before we move to the Pledge of Allegiance, I did want to mention that we do have two members that are remote this evening. One is Councilmember Olson is remote due to COVID-related concerns. And the other one is Tony Cambata, who, and I'll just read it as it is on here, it says, pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D dot zero two subsection one, Councilmember Cambata will be attending remotely at the following location, which is Sheraton Old Town Suites, Alexandria, which is 801 North Saint Asaph Street, Alexandria, Virginia, 22314, and he's in meeting room number one, due to these chances that we have to have these types of meetings where people can go in or stream in, if you will. Those are requirements by law to make sure that everybody knows that he's in a public place, that somebody could actually go up to him and talk to him. So, all right, so next what I'm gonna do is I'm going to move to number two, which is Pledge of Allegiance, so if you could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Cambata?
Here.
Councilmember Dennis?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. Next on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so at this time. We did have a sign-up sheet, which is normally what we do out there, but nobody had signed up, so in the event that nobody's, or forgot to sign up, is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak during open forum? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close open forum. We'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda, second.
We have motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Thede. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Cambata?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Next on our agenda is presentations. We have four presentations this evening, but the first one is pretty exciting because it's like a family affair kind of thing. And so the first item is the Eagle Scout Award from Matthew Mueller, which is Troop 286. And so what I'll ask is council to join me down in front, and if Matthew and the family want to come up to the front, please do. It's kind of scary. We've been saying we've known each other for a very long time, haven't we? So, first of all, for the public, what's really neat about this evening is, this is, like I said, kind of like a family affair with all of the family members becoming Eagle Scouts. And the city of Cottage Grove really looks to our youth when they're either going through the Eagle Scout or the Girl Scout Gold Awards. And we always want to recognize our kids and our youth in the city of Cottage Grove in a couple different ways. One is to understand and appreciate the fact of all the work that they've done to attain this level of leadership, and then also to present them with the plaque. And then I should mention, there is a sign-out in the hall, so if you do walk out of the council chambers here and go down to the right and down the hall towards the restrooms, you will see that there's a board, I guess is probably the best way to put it, and it has all the names of the previous Eagle Scout Award winners, as well as the Girl Scout Gold Award winners for the city of Cottage Grove dating way, way back. So we keep adding. Now, I do need to say, supply chain issues. We did get your plaque, but the actual nameplate is not here yet. So if you do go out there, you won't see your nameplate up there yet, but I assure you, we'll let you know when it is, so you guys can come check it out. And then I know a lot of times people like to take pictures. So what I'm gonna do first here is I'm going to read the plaque, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Matthew, and he's gonna tell us a little bit about what he did for his project to attain the Eagle Scout. So it says, Matthew Mueller, congratulations on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout through Troop 286 Cottage Grove, Minnesota, presented this fourth day of May 2022, from the city of Cottage Grove, Myron Bailey, Mayor. So on behalf of myself, all of our council, staff, and the citizens of Cottage Grove, congratulations on this amazing accomplishment. You can clap.
Okay, so what I did for my project was I planned and prepared the construction of an eagle, American flag retirement collection box, which can be found at the VFW in Cottage Grove. And the purpose of that was so that you can dispose, American flags are no longer fit to be flown, to be retired properly by either the Boy Scouts or the military.
Fantastic. All right, great job.
All right, do we have, anybody wanna take pictures? We'll all squeeze in here. And our two councilmembers that are remote, they don't get the fun of this. All right. All right, let's have another round of applause, and again, congratulations. All right, next on our agenda this evening is the 2022 Public Works Spring Cleanup Event presentation, and I know a lot of citizens look forward to this event every year, so our Public Works Director, Ryan Burfine, will take us through this. Ryan, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So every May, first Saturday in May, we have our spring cleanup event here in the city of Cottage Grove. It's from seven to three that day down at Cottage Grove Public Works, which is on West Point Douglas Road, just kind of south of Jamaica Avenue, roundabout there, right off Highway 61. Definitely excited to bring this back again this year. Last year, we set a record, actually, because the year prior to that with COVID, 2020, we couldn't hold the event. So last year, we had a record year for everyone to come down and bring their stuff down, and we actually made some changes last year where we added like another loader station so we can move cars through faster, and that actually worked really well. So we still had a good line to start the day. People start lining up around six or 6:15 usually. Once we got them going, we moved them through pretty quick, and actually, we got through them so fast, people were coming back with more stuff in the afternoon. So that was, that was great to see, so we expect it to be pretty efficient again this year. In terms of the items that we accept, household goods, tires and batteries, just kind of miscellaneous materials by the load, whether it's in the trunk of your car or bed of a pickup, treated and untreated lumber, electronics, and shredding. On the left is kind of our full list with the prices, and Adam Moore, he did a good job this year of getting different vendors and getting quotes for that, so we actually have a lot lower-cost vendor for our appliances this year, so instead of $10, they're actually $5, so that's good. And the electronics vendor is taking microwaves for free, so that's free this year, and then the crib mattresses are actually gonna be free as well. So a few lower costs this year for people when they bring their stuff in, which is good. Just a reminder, last year, 2021, the county stopped accepting hazardous materials, so we didn't have it last year. We knew that was coming, really because they want folks to go use the Environmental Center just up the road in Woodbury. You know, that's open year-round. I've got the hours on the screen in front of us here, and they're really encouraging people to use that year-round, and being Cottage Grove is pretty close for some of these special events, or trying to hit ones that are further away from that environmental center. But we communicated that really well last year, and we really didn't have any issues. You know, we weren't sure if people went to get the message, and they'd come down with hazardous waste, but, you know, we communicated that in a good way. So just as a reminder to folks that that's not accepted at the cleanup event again this year. And if you have questions about the event, what you can and can't bring, you can call Public Works, which is 651-458-2808, or hop on the city website as well. With that, I'll answer any questions.
All right, council, any questions for Ryan on the spring cleanup? I will tell you, in bringing paint and all that stuff to the Environmental Center, it is super quick. So just like you guys do down there, it goes through fast, you pull in, they take it out, and you're on your way, unless you decide you wanna go and look at the stuff that they put out there.
Yeah.
But that's a separate issue. All right, sounds good, thank you, Ryan. All right, next on our presentations this evening is the Public Works, Public Works Week Proclamation, and I did ask Councilmember Dave Thede to please read this year's proclamation.
So this is a National Public Works Week, that being May 15 through 21st, 2022, and motto is Ready and Resilient. So whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Cottage Grove, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents and business owners, and whereas it is in the public's best interest to learn about and understand the importance of public works and public works programs in the city of Cottage Grove, and whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council, the city of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota, hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week, to be passed this Wednesday, the fourth day of May 2022.
Once we get the motion in a second. Ryan, did you have anything else you wanted to add, or?
I'll just add that during that week, well, Wednesday, the 18th, that's our dirt day, that's when we clean up all the plow damage and reseed it and take care of that. We're gonna be having lunch for the Public Works and Parks Maintenance Staff down at Public Works, we'll be, have a lunch for them and thank them for all the, you know, work they did in the last year. It was another busy year. We had the big windstorm last September. That picture on the front was actually from the windstorm, so that was another great year that they put in, and it's just a great group of guys, and they really deserve that. So anyways, yeah, we'll have that on that Wednesday, and it'll be good.
Fantastic. Well, and I hope that I'll get the chance to be down there to personally thank them for their hard work, and I know a lot of people in our community really do appreciate all the work they do, and one of the things I was, you know, we're very well-known for is the great snow plowing in the winter, so they've got that, got that feather in their cap better than anybody else. So with that, I need a motion to approve the proclamation?
I would move to approve.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Thede?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cambata?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye, thank you. And then the next item is also another proclamation, which is Building Safety Month, and I did ask Councilmember Steve Dennis to read this proclamation.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and this is the proclamation for Building Safety Month. Whereas Cottage Grove recognizes that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, and whereas our confidence and the resilience of these buildings is achieved through the devotion of vigilant experts in building safety, fire prevention, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings, and whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by the local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota, hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as building safety in the city of Cottage Grove, passed this fourth day of May 2022. Compliments, Mayor Bailey.
I know, thank you, Councilmember Dennis. Did you want to say anything? I know you popped up there quick to make sure we had the picture. I didn't know if there was anything else you wanted to add.
I just wanted the picture to go along with the proclamation.
There you go.
But no, just wanted to recognize the great staff and community development from front counter to issue your building permit, answer your questions, all the way out to staff in the field, making sure your homes are safe from building to fire. So they do it behind the scenes, and they really enjoy their work, so.
We do appreciate it, and they've been busy over the last couple of years, and this year again.
Yep.
That is for sure. All right, so with that, I'll need a motion?
So I'll motion to approve the proclamation.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Thede. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Cambata?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Thank you, and again, pass our appreciation along to everybody. Next on our agenda is consent agenda.
I don't need to pull anything, actually, I'll just.
Okay. All right, sounds good. So is there anything council would like to pull on consent? Seeing nobody, I will look then for a motion to approve consent, as it sits.
Move consent.
We have a motion by Councilmember Thede?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Olson, Dennis, sorry. I looked at you there, Mr. Olson. Any discussion from council on anything on consent? All right, seeing none, I'll do roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambata?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. So if you're here for anything on tonight's consent calendar, all of those items have been approved. Next is eight is approved disbursement. Eight A is to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dennis.
Second.
Well, we'll get one in there. Second by Councilmember Cambata. Any other discussion? Roll call, vote again.
Councilmember Cambata?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion's carry. Nine is public hearing. Is there, is none this evening? Ten is bid awards. We do have one bid award this evening, which is the Glacial Valley Park Award Bid, and Ryan Burfine's gonna walk us through this one. Welcome back.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so last Thursday, April 28th, we did accept bids for the Glacial Valley Park Project, which is kind of in the north end of town, right along Keats Avenue, just north of Ravine Parkway. We did receive two bids from Sun Ram Construction and Urban Companies. You can see on the screen, unfortunately, our total base bid was above the engineer's estimate. There was no specific line item, specific parts of the project that came in higher, it was really just across-the-board higher pricing, which we know is a fact of our economy today. You know, we were trying to anticipate that, but bidding out whole parks is not something that we do very often in parks of this scale, so, you know, we looked at other communities, things they had done to come up with the engineer's estimate, but we did come in higher. Alternate one was for some additional conduit for lighting for the soccer and football field is what alternate one was for. Outside of this part of the project, there's also the playground and the park building that council's aware of, and then the lighting was a separate part of the project that would be bid separately. There was options for lighting of the hockey rink, the courts, the baseball field, and the football field. And with these bids coming in higher, the recommendation tonight is still to award the base bid for a few reasons. One, this neighborhood's really largely built out. This park has been something on our plans for quite some time, as we've been working through the parks in the city, and it's something that that community and that area is definitely ready for and excited for. But the other thing is with the lighting, we had some options in case costs were higher. If the project is awarded tonight, we're still recommending that the Parks Department go ahead with the hockey rink and the court lighting, which is about $150,000. That's really integral to that, you know, those sports, right? You need those to use those more often, especially with hockey in the winter, right? It's dark, so. But with the football field and the baseball field, you know, it's not something that's really 100% necessary to use those fields, really, you know, most of the time, a lot of our fields are not lit, and that cost was around $361,000, would have been that separate bid for the lighting. So the recommendation is to still move ahead with the base bid, you know, build this park, and then just not do the football field and the baseball field lighting, and that cost would more than offset the additional cost and still fit within the overall project budget. So that is the recommendation tonight, which is on the screen before you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, yeah, any questions? Councilmember Thede?
So you're saying that the, not doing the fields right now takes it underneath the engineer's estimate, or that's part of the 2.5?
Yep, so, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Thede, the park lighting was really gonna be bid separate, so we kind of had these different project paths we were going down. One was the park construction, which is here, the park building is separate, and then the park lighting was separate. All of that was in a total project budget that we had anticipated. So by not doing that lighting, you know, this project is still the actual construction of all the fields and all the different parts of the park, it's just that other path that we were going down of the park lighting, we'll just do the smaller components, and we won't do the two large fields. So, you know, the overall budget of the park is what we're really looking at in terms of the Park Trust Fund and the funding that we have, so that's where you'll see that, call it cost reduction. This would still stay the same.
So we know that there's currently supply chain issues in a, you know, and then obviously a lot of construction and things like that, and we're actually 300,000 over the engineer's What, you know, what's, is it possible that that would come down at some point?
You know, that, that's always a possibility, I guess, in the construction industry. We don't like to count on costs dropping ever, it's very hard. You know, maybe things would stay flat, right? You know, we, when you've had a really bad recession, right, in 2009, then I think we saw some pricing of paving and things like that come down. The hard part is a lot of this is very specialty work when you're building the fields and such, so the, some of that more typical construction with the paving and utilities is quite a bit less. So it's always a gamble to try and go that route. The one thing is when you're going through a process in the following year, you know, MINDOT standards have changed for some of the scopes of work, so it requires, you know, updating all those components of the project, then also rebidding and going through all of those costs as well. So you have to see a pretty good cost reduction to make up for those extra costs. So it's always hard when you get into this position, certainly, but I think with the options that we have to save on the lighting and really still have a good park for the neighborhood is kind of the main consideration.
Councilmember Olson, you had something?
I did, thank you, Mayor. Ryan, I understand what you're saying about bidding the various elements of the project separately, and that, you know, the grand total of each of those elements is really what we're budgeting for, for a total cost for this park. You mentioned we can save some money by not doing the lighting on the football fields and the baseball fields. So I have two questions. Number one, in your professional opinion, does it make sense to wait on the lighting for the football and baseball fields, or even though it might, you know, cost us some money, do you get an economy of scale doing it at the same time that you're doing the rest of the project, as opposed to coming in à la carte, you know, next year, the year after? That's number one. And then number two is, if the council and staff chose to not do the lighting for the football fields and the baseball fields, would we still provide all of the necessary infrastructure for that lighting project so that if and when the time came that we chose to do it, you know, keeping in mind we could do it now or we could do it later? So all of that infrastructure would already be in the ground?
Jennifer's gonna respond to this one, Justin.
Mayor, members of the council, we have a couple of options. Right now, when we look at how this project element is bid out, we're using our park dedication funds for this, so our park trust. Council, as we talked about in the workshop, will also be looking at bonding for the building. At that time, you could consider additional debt to potentially fund the lights if you wish, and we can talk about the timing of that debt issuance, and also look at the value of the building, how that construction bid comes in. So I would say you still have a number of different options going forward to address the lights. I don't think you need to address it tonight, that there'll be more opportunities in the future to figure out how to finance those lights and what mechanism you'd like to use. So at this point, I don't think we're losing any economy of scale for those lights, so I don't think you're at a disadvantage tonight to award as the Public Works Director has indicated.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Olson?
I think so. Jennifer, just to be clear, does that mean that we're gonna have an opportunity in the near-term future to talk about whether we wanna include the infrastructure for that lighting in the work that is being presented right now for authorization?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, we can consider that, especially as we go into the budget discussion and figure out how we wanna prioritize that in regards to our options for it, so tonight's award would not negate any of those decisions.
Okay, then I'm covered, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comments? Councilmember Thede?
Just one quick question again, that, you know, this is on the northernmost edge of the city, and with all the other building coming down from the north, all right, do we, do we charge different rates for non-residents of Cottage Grove to use some of the fields and the services?
I think Zach walked out.
We do, our Parks Director probably have that.
Yeah, he was here earlier. There is, I think we have a mutual, mutually agreed, shared program between the city of Woodbury and the city of Cottage Grove, but I don't recall, I do know that there's a, I'll do what I remember, there is a hierarchy of like our in-house leagues and our athletic associations get first priority, and then it moves to like Woodbury and some of the other types of leagues, and that's actually the same way that Woodbury does it on their fields too, when Cottage Grove's over there using them.
So I'm trying to think, is there any, is there any major park close by in Woodbury yet with all the houses they put in?
That I do know, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Thede, they are planning for, not directly close to this, but a little further north of their border to serve kind of their southern residents. They do have a plan for a little bit larger park, similar scale to this, that we've seen on their, their master plan, to kind of cover each side of the border.
All right, okay, thank you.
All right, so at this point, we do have, we'll need a motion in a second, whoever would like to do that.
I'd like to motion for approval.
All right, so I think you're fine with that, right? We're good? Okay, 'cause I know he's doing it remotely. So I have a motion by Councilmember Cambata. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Cambata?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye, motion carries. Next on our agenda this evening is our regular agenda, and A is Leafline Labs' expansion, and Christine Costello's gonna walk us through this, so welcome back, Christine.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight, Leafline Labs for site plan review and conditional use permit. Just for a little bit of background, for their location, they are off 97th Street, they're south of American AGCO, and then just north of Renewal by Anderson, their existing building, and then their expansion. So Leafline Labs originally, back in 2014, received approval for a 43,700-square-foot building. They came back before the city in 2020 for a greenhouse expansion, and as you know, at that time, the pandemic began, and so the applicant kind of put a halt on things, and recently came back before us to consider construction again, but this time they were looking at traditional construction instead of the greenhouse expansion, it just better supports their operation needs. So their proposal is twofold. They have a Phase 1 of 7,000, or 70,000 square feet, shown in yellow, and Phase 2 of 70,000. They have a Phase 1 of 70,000, or 70,000 square feet, shown in yellow, and Phase 2 of 67,000 square feet. The first phase will include grow and flower rooms, irrigation, break rooms and restrooms, and additional storage. In terms of parking, there is an existing 102 parking spaces out on site. With Phase 1, they're going to add an additional 15 spaces. Then when Phase 2 comes in, they'll add an additional 133 spaces with a proof of parking of 55 spaces. And just to kind of give you some idea in terms of how many they employ, currently they employ 48 individuals. Phase 1, they're estimating 60 employees, and then Phase 2 bringing in 120 employees for their growth. Now, they are on a shift schedule, so they're never all there at the same time. In terms of landscape, mitigation was met back in 2015. You can see on the screen some areas to the north of where they're adding some additional parking, some parking lot landscaping, and some additional perimeter plantings as well. In terms of odor control, back in 2014, they installed an odor mitigation system that included carbon filters within their exhaust system. And on the map, it shows the three locations that they do monitor, and they do provide those reports to the city. The city can also request to take additional readings at any time if needed. And to date, we have not received any complaints regarding odor. In terms of architecture, again, they're going to do the traditional architecture instead of the greenhouse expansion. It will match the existing building and meet our 65% Class 1 materials in our industrial park. And with that, before you is the recommendation. The applicant is here in the audience if you have any question for them, and I can take any questions as well.
All right. First, is any questions for Christine? All right. Thank you, Christine. The applicant would like to speak?
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. My name's Amanda Thomas. I'm from ISG. We're the engineer on the project, and my counterpart here.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm John Dieter, Director of Construction Management, Leafline.
And we've been really grateful. Staff has been wonderful to work with getting through the conditional use and site plan application. Do you have any initial questions looking at the site plan?
No, I would just say that, you know, thank you for coming in tonight, and, you know, they've been an amazing partner in the business park for a multitude of reasons, but also state-of-the-art when it came to the possible smell when we originally met with them to build here and when, and it's pretty exciting to see that. But they're, they're like many others in our business park are expanding, so we're pretty excited for that and love the fact that they're creating some new jobs, so. Council, any comments or questions for the engineer or the? I think we're good.
Awesome.
Awesome. Thank you. That was simple for you. So with that, council, if there's no other questions or comments on this particular one, there is a motion before us.
I can, I'll go ahead and move that we adopt Resolution 2022-075 approving an amended conditional use permit in site plan for the addition of an approximate 70,000 square foot addition and future approximate 67,000 square foot expansion to the existing Leafline Labs Pharmaceutical Manufacturing Facility at 8235 97th Street South.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Olson. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Joe.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Thank you, guys, for coming tonight. Appreciate it. All right. On our regular meeting agenda, B is aggregate industry's final scoping decision document. And I think Christine is going to start us off and then be introducing somebody.
Right. This is beyond my scope of knowledge, so I'll just want to introduce from Stantec, Peter Miller, and he'll walk you through the environmental impacts in terms of Nelson Mine, where we are at this point.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Peter Miller. I'm with Stantec. We are helping the City of Cottage Grove with the environmental impact statement for the proposed project, the Ag Industries Mine Backwater Project. What we're here to do tonight is just to continue with the EIS process. We need the council to adopt the resolution for the final scoping decision document. Jennifer and Emily have been great support for us at Stantec. My colleague Beth Elliott's here as well. She's done a lot of work in the city over the years. And we also utilize environmental attorney from Larkin Hoffman for some of the tough questions. Was here in March, and we got approval to submit our initial scoping documents for public review and comment. And then we held a planning commission meeting where we had a public hearing to accept comments from the public. So just to remind you, you've probably been through environmental review before, but to remind you what we're doing with an environmental impact statement, we're looking at all the potential environmental effects from this proposed project. And then with an environmental impact statement that's different from an environmental assessment worksheet, we also have to look at alternatives. So alternatives to the proposed project and what those impacts may be. So through that process, we can look at ways to reduce environmental effects, and those that are unavoidable, we look at mitigation options. So mitigation plan is also part of the process. So why are we doing this? It's mandatory under state rules. There's two different categories. Because of the size and the complexity of this proposed mine, we have to do a mandatory environmental impact statement, and you are listed as a responsible government unit. So where are we at? Kind of three stages. Scoping is where we are right now, and the yellow box here is where we are tonight. We've gone through putting out a draft scoping document, putting out a draft environmental worksheet. We received comments through the 30-day public review process, and now we've edited our document, and we're ready to publish that as our final scope document so we can move on to the draft EIS. We received comments. Roughly 15 different agencies and citizens commented on the draft scoping documents to help give us substantial content changes that they felt were needed. So we took those all into consideration and created a response to comment for each one. What did we hear? Nothing too surprising. Some comments came in from some of the agencies about some of the threatened endangered species that we may run into out there. There's a lot of mussels in the river, as you can imagine. Some are threatened and endangered, and there's also a cricket frog that could have habitat in this area, so we're going to do, the proposer's going to do a few more studies. Other than that, there was a couple of corrections and additions to some of the permits that are going to be needed, and here they are. There's a lot of agencies that will oversee this project. Once environmental review is done, that's when permitting can happen, including the city. The city will have to issue a mining permit for this, for this project, and you can see all the different agencies from the Corps of Engineers to the DNR and Washington County as well. All right. So schedule. We were here in March. You approved the resolution to publish the draft scoping document. We held the public hearing, and now we're back here for approval of the final scoping decision document so we can move on in the process. You'll see here that on June 20th, we're anticipating to release that the EIS process is beginning. So it'll be a while before we come back. It's going to take some time. You see here 280 days from June. Sometimes they take longer, so it might be a year before we're back. And I stand for questions, and the recommendation is to approve the final scoping decision document.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Thede, you had a question?
Yeah. So I saw that on the one sheet you had, it was maybe eight to 10, you know, local people, the landowners and things like that. I know there's a big facility right out there that, that the red line goes right along their property and so forth. What kind of comments did you get from those folks?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council. Some were just, you know, comments about whether they were for the project or not for the project, so we noted those. Others made comments about the river and what it meant to them and how it's a great resource. There were some just talking about things like, you know, visually, what's this going to look like, things like that. Nothing that really changed our scope. We took those into account, but we're, we're planning to look at all the different elements that are necessary to ensure there's not adverse environmental effects.
And there's no, with this, there's no like blasting for this mine or any, anything that would really shake the foundation?
Sure. Mayor, council. Yeah, at this point, they're not proposing to do any, you know, explosives. It's the same mining process that they currently do. It's a floating dredge that has a clamshell bucket that goes down and picks it up. So the material's loose enough, it's sand and gravels, that it doesn't require any explosive excavation.
And one more question.
Go ahead.
And imagine you'll do this in your studies. I know that there was kind of a historical kind of piece of property out there or some buildings. Was there any, any mention about that or?
Yeah. Mayor, council, we take that into account. National historic places, for example. Cultural resources is another one. From what I can recall, there is a site on the island, but it's not within the active mining area or the proposed mining area.
Okay. Any other questions from council at this point? I guess not. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, council, we do have a recommendation before us. Who would like to make that recommendation?
Can I stop at play?
What's that?
Can I, can I motion to make that recommendation?
Yes, you can. All right. So Councilmember Cambada made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. Any further discussion? Roll call vote? Oh, I'm sorry. I want, before roll call, Councilmember Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor. This came before us back in March. I think you may have been gone for the particular meeting. And at the time, you know, just so people understand, there are certain things that we might be required legally to do. Doesn't mean we necessarily personally want to do them. And I know there was a lot of discussion that happened that night where pretty much everybody, you know, I summed it up at the end, that, you know, this, this mine, mining process has been going on for a long time. And it, you know, at some point, we might like to move forward for the community. And I think that was, that was a feeling Councilmember Thede might recall, that we had that discussion. He's shaking his head, yes. So for, for the record, it's, you know, it's not necessarily something that I want to do, but we're held legally accountable to do it, so.
Okay. All right. Joe, do you want to do a roll?
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next is 12 is council comments or requests with everybody kind of all over the place. I will start with Councilmember Cambada. Is there anything you'd like to, to share this evening?
Uh, yeah. I just wanted to reiterate that we've got spring cleanup event, May 7th, here coming up. I know Ryan spoke about it, but I just wanted to kind of recap on that. So 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, anyone who's interested can go on the city website and look for the link for spring cleanup event. That'll give you a schedule of fees for various items and hours and location. So in the interest of keeping our community clean and beautiful, I would encourage anyone who's looking for an excuse to clean out their garage to, if you want to explore that.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Dennis?
All right. Thanks, Mayor. I actually have six different items, and for, for the length of what I'm going to talk about, I'm going to keep everything as brief as I possibly can. The first thing is, this is Small Business Week, and this is an opportunity for all of us as members of the community to not only show appreciation for our small businesses, but to help support them because it's a vital part of our local economy. Small businesses keep a substantial percentage of the money that is spent here revolving around our community, and that works for everybody, and it's a really good thing. So that's number one. Second is, today is International Firefighters Day, and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the fact that we have fantastic people who serve right here in Cottage Grove to protect us. And we can never share enough gratitude for the difference that those folks make here in keeping our community safe. Next up is next week, Mayor Bailey and I will be hosting an economic development forum. It'll be going through Facebook Live, and we're going to open that up to the community for questions, for different businesses that they might like to see us work to bring to town and recruit, which is something that we will be actively doing here later in the month. We go to the ICSC out in Las Vegas. So we would love to hear from people, and we'll talk a little bit about the current state of, of what's happening here in town and, and make that a fun evening. So please tune in. That's going to be on the 10th, I believe, of May, Tuesday.
Yep.
And so look for that. Next is, work is being done for our Memorial Day Ceremony, which we'll be having here at City Hall on May 30th, 1:00 PM on that particular day, and we invite everybody in the community to come out. We put on a, a wonderful ceremony of respect for remembering those in our military who have given the ultimate sacrifice. And then last but not least, want to take a quick moment to recognize a gentleman who retired from the city today, Neil Bells Camper, who gave 24-plus years of service to the community and did a great job of serving as a humble public servant. So, Mayor, that's what I have.
Fantastic. Thank you. Councilmember Thede? And then I'll go to you, Councilmember Olson. I guess I did that backwards.
All right. For those of you that are putting X's on your calendars relative to Strawberry Fest, it's only six weeks away, believe it or not, only six weeks away. So, you know, get excited, you know, go out to the website, check things out. We're still having our, our planning meetings. We need help and volunteers for, for different things, so, so definitely I encourage everybody to, to get involved because it's a blast. It's coming back after two years of, of being gone, so. And then I'd also like to extend, this, this Sunday is Mother's Day, and I'd like to extend a Happy Mother's Day to all of our mothers out there. So, so there you go. I guess that's all I got.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I have nothing, Mayor.
You have nothing? Okay. I do have a few items that I will share.
Did you ask Tony?
Oh, yeah. I did Tony first.
Oh, did you?
All right. So a couple of things I wanted to share. First of all, I wanted to recognize, we, it's interesting, Councilmember Dennis was just mentioning about Neil, Neil Bells Camper retiring. He's been with us for a very long time. Recently, we had our Finance Director, Robin Rowland, who retired. They talk about this great resignation or retirement thing. It's even happening within cities, but sometimes when those things happen too, they, they also open up opportunities for either people to move up within the city, but also to, in this particular case, also to maybe come back to the city. So one of the, one of the interesting things I'll just mention is both Brenda, and I'm going to, I'm doing, now I'm going to put my glasses on because you, I know what it used to be, your, your old name, Melonowski. Brenda is our new Finance Director, and I should say she's our new Finance Director, but she actually was in our Finance Department many years ago and has decided to come back home as our Finance Director. So I wanted to personally welcome you back, and just because I always like to needle our friends to the north, Woodbury was trying to get you, but we didn't let them. So we appreciate having you, having you here. And then Tammy, who is going to be our city clerk, also an internal that was in a different position within the City of Cottage Grove, who is deciding to take on a new role with Neil's retirement, and I'll get to Joe here in a minute. But with that retirement, there's some changes that we get to do that kind of solidifies some positions and move people around. So welcome to that new role that you're going to do here, and I said I'm going to get to you in a minute. The other item I wanted to, to mention real quick is I, we, we did have, the City of Cottage Grove, along with the business community, had the Business Expo this last Saturday. And I just want to compliment the chamber and everybody that was, put that event on. It was kind of a rainy day, but it really did drive a lot of traffic into the, into the building. What I did also notice that day is a couple of things. One, I was able to see some pictures of what is going to be the new things. One, I was able to see some pictures of what is going to be the Strawberry Festival float. That's almost done. And honestly, that float would not have been completed without the financial support of 3M and Renewal by Anderson, who funded 100% of the float to be renovated and put back together. And of course, I should say, though, the city did buy the trailer, so we did have our piece of that. The other thing I wanted to mention is, we had the opportunity also on Saturday to have a town hall here at City Hall with Representative Angie Craig, where she took questions from the public. And that I was able, I was honored to be the emcee for her. And just wanted to mention how much we appreciate, or I appreciate, and I only think the council does, too, for the fact that she was able to help us achieve getting $3 million for the road and infrastructure improvements for the future shops at Cottage View. And then I was really excited to hear just a couple of days ago that she had called us back. By fact, I think she was in town visiting some of our small businesses, but she had reached back out to me to let me know that we had submitted some projects. Just little inside baseball, there's different projects and different funding options that are out in the federal government realm, and we have been asking and looking at different options for different things that will help reduce the overall taxes on projects that would involve our city. And it doesn't mean we have it yet, but she was able to put in the 2023 Appropriations Bill at this point. I think it's just over $8 million at this moment, we don't know if that'll be the final number, for the future construction or reconstruction of 80th Street, which is also, I've heard a lot of people mention that to me, about 80th Street from my deal to Highway 61. So again, I just wanted to share my appreciation and gratitude to Angie Craig for her continued support of helping with some of these different road projects that we're wanting to get done here in Cottage Grove. And then getting back, as I was just saying, to Joe. So Joe Fishbach, he's not leaving. All right, I want to say that. So he's not retiring, he's not going away. But Joe has been wearing a couple of different hats. And the nice thing is Tammy now gets to take one of those hats off him, and now she gets to be the City Clerk. So Joe's been City Clerk slash HR Director slash, I mean, how many more slashes do you want in there? Quite a few. And so we wanted to recognize the fact that, you know, we really appreciated all the work that you did as our City Clerk slash all these other roles, but now you get to go back to that one role, so to speak, which is awesome. And so I'm going to just ask real quick for council to join me down in front while we present Neil with this plaque of appreciation.
Get up here.
All right. So I'm going to present this to Joe. It just says, presented to Joe Fishbach for his years of service as the Cottage Grove City Clerk from April 2015 through May of 2022, presented on May 4, 2022 by the Cottage Grove City Council. And so I'm going to present this to you and just say we do appreciate all the work. And I'm sure you're giving her lots of pointers. Now that she's going to take that over, and then he's going to slam that door shut. And I'm just joking. So on behalf of myself and the council, and I'm sure all staff here and the citizens of Cottage Grove, thank you for all the work that you've done, elections and everything else that you've done over the years. And we're excited to have you stay with us and obviously in the HR role. So let's give her a round of applause. All right. So that's it for council comments requests. The next item on our agenda is a workshop, which is open to the public this evening, believe it or not. It is May, and it's early May, and we are about to go into the early starting of budget discussions for 2023/2024. So we'll be doing that in the training room. There is no workshop closed public this evening, so we won't be adjourning in here. We'll be adjourning in the training room. So everybody have a great evening and Happy Mother's Day.